I'm going to call this November 22nd, committee of the whole to order. And anybody that has a declaration of peculiar interest, they can declare it now or later on if they need arises. Welcome our delegation, our first delegation today. The Don Scott, the principal planner, Questa Planning Consultants, Giorgio Plan of Subdivision forty-two T, two thousand sixteen oh eight. Don, you want to come up to the podium? Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. Thank you, Mayor for counsel for allowing me a few minutes to speak to your question. Subdivision.
Yeah. You want your name?
Yeah, we'd like to capture your words of wisdom.
You have to speak into the mic to do that. Words of wisdom, this could be very short then.
You catch on quick.
Always a second thought. Again, thank you for this opportunity to discuss the plan of subdivision that you're going to be dealing with, I think, later. It's in Hanover, in northern section of Hanover, and it's going to create sixty-seven single-family lots and about fifty-nine townhouses in a number of blocks. I have been asked by Don and Donna Tedford to provide some assistance with regard to their concerns with this, with respect to the approval of this draft plan. Now, the Tedfords have been involved with the development of this subdivision for a number of years and feel strongly that the issues that they have brought forward during that time period have not really been adequately addressed. There's no issue with the area being developed for residential, that's a given, notwithstanding the potential urban design issues related to the townhouse strip development along the eastern boundary, which raises some design questions. I gather at the last Hanover council meeting that a number of the neighbors also have some concerns with the design issues. I don't represent those people. Now, the Tedfords have expressed a number of concerns with regard to the impact that this subdivision will, and its layout will have on their ability to create an efficient design on their lands. I should note as well that the Tedfords have questioned the lack of an approved outlet for sanitary and stormwater services for the subdivision, and I'm not quite certain that that question has really been satisfactorily answered, especially not to the Tedfords. I am aware that the municipal planner slash county planner, Mr. Taylor, has assessed the issues raised by the Tedfords, but I feel their concerns may have been set aside a little too quickly. The Tedfords own a significant parcel of land, approximately twenty-three acres, adjacent to the southern boundary of the proposed subdivision, and it raises the question about whether it would not be beneficial and reasonable to encourage a street pattern and land use design that would benefit both parties, and most importantly, the municipality, which will eventually be given the responsibility of maintaining the streets and providing various other services. It would seem logical and reasonable to make an effort at this time, before final approval, to develop an efficient and attractive street and land use plan for the whole area. Now, the planning report that Mr. Taylor tabled at the November 5th Hanover council meeting reflected his very usual thorough and efficient job at analyzing the land use matters. And generally, I agree with Mr. Taylor, but every once in a while, we disagree. However, despite that report, I would suggest that a review of plans of subdivision should pay very close attention to the Planning Act, in particular, Section fifty-one twenty-four. Now, this section establishes the criteria for considering the appropriateness of a draft plan of subdivision. I will admit that most of the criteria have been touched on in one way or another in the staff report. However, there's one criterion that needs further review, in my opinion, that's subsection C, which requires that not only should a plan conform to the official plan, but is, it is also required that it conforms to adjacent plans of subdivision. Now, I will admit, it's very difficult to come up with a good design when you're trying to plan a subdivision where it's partially surrounded by existing development that is quite different with regard to building design and lot sizes in particular, but I feel you should make your best effort to do so. The Tedfords do not have a plan of subdivision in the mill, but the design proposed on these lands will severely restrict an efficient plan of subdivision on their lands. If you look in the staff report, you'll see an air photo, which indicates that there's a very large spring-fed pond on the Tedfords' property, and if you look carefully at the distance between that pond and the proposed plan of subdivision, it's quite easy to see that there is not enough room for a street pattern in there that has development on both sides, in other words, an efficient street pattern. Coordinating street patterns could solve this problem, and if you don't address that, you're going to end up with a street, some lots on either the Tedfords or the draft plan with a road, a municipal road, on the front and the rear of these lots. Now, the principle of the section I cited is simply that you should not design a plan of subdivision in isolation. One needs to take other lands into consideration, and this, I feel, has not really been done appropriately or could be done much better. I would request that the approval or further consideration be deferred, simply to try to work out a more appropriate street pattern and servicing provisions, and with cooperation on both sides, this could occur in a month or two, in a very short period of time. And you should remember, you should remember that when you approve a plan of subdivision, that's going to be there for a century, and so a minor delay should not really be an issue. And I would suggest, if we do follow that course, that some of the other property owners along the Eighth Avenue North should be, should be a little bit more active in the participation of the design of the subdivision. Thank you for the time. You see, you're all still awake, that's good. For the opportunity to speak to you, and if you have any questions at this time, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I'll let you, if there's any questions, I could answer them quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, Mr. Scott. Is there a possibility of putting it on the screen and you just point on what the pointer exactly what you want to emphasize? Is that a possibility? There you are.
There's the air photo, and you see that dark area immediately south? That's a, that's a spring-fed pond, and so it's difficult to get a street in there with development on both sides unless you cooperate with the property to the north and you have a joint street pattern in that area. That's one of the, one of the principal issues there is you're, you're developing your own property without due regard for surrounding properties, which is, if you go ahead, it's just going to create problems for the adjoining property owner. And it's, now's the time, if you're going to look at it and try to make an effort to resolve that issue, now's the time to do it. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that information. Any other questions, Council Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess the question comes to mind, if you were the planner for the other side, is there a balance in what you're proposing?
As I was saying, it's always difficult when you're, in this particular case, you've got existing development on two sides, and it's difficult to prepare a plan. You should make an effort by at least finding out what the surrounding property owners want and try to accommodate it wherever possible. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Thank you. And if I may, so what you're bringing forward today, having reviewed the staff report, is it your understanding that staff not only has had the benefit of all of your comments? Like, you're not bringing anything new today, all of this has been stated already, right?
As I mentioned, the Tedfords have been involved with this for quite some time now, a couple of years, and I think they just felt that they weren't getting anywhere and they weren't being listened to, and I think that's why Don got a hold of me to see if at the age of proof, you can appeal them to the treadmill or something of that nature. That just delays everything, us, a lot of people, a lot more money.
Thank you.
Now's the time to do it, if you're going to do it at all. Okay, that's a good update. Any other questions? Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much.
Ron Davidson, the planner, for the other side, I guess. Welcome, Ron.
Yes, good morning. Thanks, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'll try to keep this brief. I am here today representing LaKia Giorgio. She, and she's the owner of the property, and she and her husband, Carl Thompson, are proposing to develop a plan of subdivision. Just a brief history here, the application for plan of subdivision was filed with the county on November 24th, two thousand sixteen, so almost two years ago to the day, and at the same time, we filed the application for rezoning with the town of Hanover. Now, we need to back up a bit so you can understand and put maybe Don Scott's comments into perspective. We began working on this project in February of two thousand and twelve, so we're pushing almost seven years. Shortly after that, when we first began, we started discussions with the town, the county, and the conservation authority regarding submission requirements and the general layout of the roads and lots within this development. Now, at the request of the adjacent landowners, the Tedfords, LaKia, Carl, and I also met with them about the idea of running a road, or a joint road, along the southerly boundary of this property and along the northerly boundary of the Tedford property, so it would be a joint road venue, or venture, pardon me. We met on two occasions with the Tedfords, once in a restaurant for a couple of hours and another time at the Tedfords' house, January 31st, two thousand fourteen, and again on April 21st, two thousand and fifteen. So there's been lots of dialogue in that regard. The discussions did not go well. Myself and the engineer did take a look at options for designing a road, and it was, it was looked into, and at the end of the day, and following those two meetings with the Tedfords, Carl and LaKia decided they did not want to pursue a joint venture with the neighbors. They did, however, agree to leave a road stub joining their subdivision, like our subdivision, to future development on the Tedford property, and that's now in the plan of subdivision. There's a public meeting held last year, March of two thousand seventeen. Following that meeting, we were asked by the town and the county to provide additional information with regard to traffic, so the traffic impact study addendum was prepared. And also, the county requested that we then have a noise impact study conducted because there is a Hydro One substation to the immediate north, and we wanted to be sure, or the county wanted to be sure, and rightfully so, that the residences in the subdivision were not going to be impacted by that Hydro One substation. So that study was completed, and that took quite a while. Eighteen months later, taking us till last Tuesday, or Tuesday, November 5th, we went back to town council. So we already had our public meeting a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, now we're going back for two reasons. One, to get council to approve the zoning bylaw amendment, which they did, and two, to endorse the conditions of draft approval, which are before you today, and they did that as well. Now, backing up a couple of days prior to the council meeting, the Tedfords sent a letter to the town stating their concerns again. On that note, I was asked to attend a meeting one hour before town council, they didn't ask me to attend one hour, I showed up one hour before town council, to meet with the town CAO, Public Works Manager, the town's engineering consultant, the county's senior planner, Mr. Taylor, and the Tedfords. I attended that meeting, and so did our engineer, and the meeting went well, so we thought. Mr. Scott was not there. It was my understanding that the neighbor, the Tedfords, would be satisfied with the development if two things were to occur, as put in their letter, stated in their letter. Firstly, a fence is to be erected along the entire length of the subject property where it abuts the Tedford lands, and secondly, that the town take ownership of the neighbor's lands of the Tedford property where the existing sanitary sewer is located. This acquisition would be in the form of a road allowance. The establishment of that road allowance would pave the way for development on the Tedford property. At the present time, the land on which the sewer line exists, it is on the Tedford property, and there's not even an easement there. So yeah, that needs to be tidied up. So with regard to the first request, the fence, at that meeting, Mr. Taylor, the county planner, advised that the construction of a fence can be dealt with at the subdivision agreement stage, and, but to satisfy the neighbor, the fence issue can also be identified in general terms in the condition of draft approval, which is what you have before you today. Everyone in that room, again, this is the meeting we had with staff and county planner and the Tedfords, seemed to be satisfied, that was my take, and I've spoke with others since, and it's their take as well, that the condition, that this condition being added, with these conditions being added, that the draft conditions were fine, and that we thought everybody in the room, again, was, was, was happy with that. One hour later, we, we met with town council. At that town council meeting, I stood up, gave council an update as to what we've done for the last eighteen months, and then the, the county planner did the same, and he recommended, he provided a planning report, and recommended approval of the zoning bylaw amendment, and recommended that town council endorse the conditions of draft approval. No one else spoke at the meeting. Mr. Tedford did not speak, Mr. Scott did not speak. Mr. Scott was not involved in the, in the meeting, though, an hour earlier. We thought everything was fine, council adopted the zoning bylaw amendment that night, and then we got a letter a couple of days later from Mr. Scott saying, basically, not so fast, he wants to revisit the shared road idea. I'm asking you respectfully to listen to your town, your county planner today, and do approve the subdivision. My clients, first of all, have no interest whatsoever in doing a joint venture, that ship has sailed, the discussions did not go well. Other than a crude sketch submitted by the Tedfords about four years ago, they've done nothing, to my knowledge anyways, to move forward with a development proposal on their property, and I think Mr. Scott has already acknowledged that. Again, a road stub is being provided to the Tedford property. Mr. Scott's suggestion that there's no hurry in getting draft approval is not fair. My clients have been at this a long time, seven years, and a couple of years since we filed the application. They have met, again, with, with the neighbors to discuss this, and it's, they've got a sizable investment in this, in this property, and it's time to move forward with the approval. The letter from Mr. Scott and his presentation, in my mind, flies in the face of everything that was discussed at the meeting with the neighbors, town staff and county staff two weeks ago. I left the room believing that everything was okay, and I suppose you can ask Mr. Taylor if he, he thought the same. We agreed to the changes of, of the draft conditions to include a fence, so that was put in there, and, and an hour later, council endorsed that. As I said, both the neighbor and Mr. Scott attended the meeting, council meeting, and I didn't say a word. I guess if council has questions about this particular matter, ask your planner, he was there. Lastly, there's just one of the throw-in comments about the neighbors not being happy with the, the design issues of the townhouses, I don't think that's a fair comment either. As you're, probably everybody in this room is aware, you have minimum lot density requirements in the county official plan, and you've got them in the Hanover official plan as well, it's the tune of twenty units per net hectare. This development, I believe, is just under that, so we don't even quite meet the minimum standards. We tried, but we, it's, it's not possible. So it is necessary to include a medium-density development component in the form of townhouses. The townhouses will be at the back of the property, follows the former rail trail, probably as far away from the neighbors as you could possibly be. There's no design issues here, the problem probably is NIMBY. I attend a lot of public meetings, as do you guys, and you'll find that not everybody loves subdivisions, subdivisions that involve medium-density development. It's a reality, and it's something that we have to not only live with, but promote and embrace, I guess. So I would say that those comments aren't fair as well. That's my presentation.
Thank you very much for making that presentation. It's always good to have some other points of view. Yes, Councilor McQueen, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, through Ron. Can you pull, can somebody pull up that, now, there's a sketch of the proposed subdivision, sort of, it's laid out in a, it's two pictures, I think, past the, the aerial.
Subdivision.
Yeah, so just if you can pull it up on the screen, Mr. Warden, that's adequate. Four of twenty-nine, I think I have it, or I'm not sure what's on there, but. Yeah, right there. So, so you, Mr. Warden, to Ron, so the stub for that, your, the road is, is basically identified there, sort of, in the middle of the map, is that correct?
You can see one of the roads going north-south, the left one, if you will, the westwardly one, it ties into the Tedford property.
So that's sort of the bottom there, sort of, a little bit off to the center, to the left, sort of thing, right?
That's right. There may also be access, see the west of that, and it's hard to see, there's another road, existing road running north-south, that's where, I believe, the sanitary sewer line is, and it's possible to extend that road as well onto the Tedford property.
And the said fence then would be at the very bottom, along the bottom.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Asking that, identifying that information. Any other questions? Councilor Echols, and then Council Fosbrook?
When was the last time that the official plan in Hanover were any, was looked at, reviewed, and these lands were designated, how were they designated? Have they been in for residential development, or when they came from Benteck, were they still an agricultural land?
I can answer that.
I thought you could.
So the town, the town did a, first of all, they did an update to their official plan, I want to say, seven or eight or nine years ago, and at that time, these lands were changed from, I think that, I think it was future development, or it might have been agricultural, it doesn't matter, the policies are pretty much the same, to residential. In two thousand and fourteen, the town, I think I already answered your question, sir, but the town updated or came up with a new official plan in two thousand and fourteen, which I wrote.
In consultation, who would be the lead staff person at Hanover in that planning at that point in time?
Mr. Tedford.
Mr. Tedford, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I wonder if we shouldn't be reviewing this staff report sooner than later while these gentlemen are present.
Right after the consent agenda is the first one.
On the list.
Okay. That won't take long. Okay, thanks, Ron, for making that presentation. Information we have, so we'll move on to, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and that the following consent agenda items be received, and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports, and that correspondents be supported or receive for information as recommended in the consent agenda. Can we have an agreement that consent agenda is okay, is Counselor Wright on the floor? Are you, and Counselor Fosbrook, you seconding it?
What I was going to propose is that, I promised to be brief, but I have some questions for every, every item.
Counselor Baradell, you're seconding the motion?
No, I'd like to pull A.
You'd like to pull A?
Yes.
I'll second it to get it on the table.
Thanks, thanks for that, John. So the, we will, is it only A that we're going to pull, then?
I have questions.
Are you pulling them all, or are you just wanting general comments, because you have issues with, with what's in the reports, or are you making comments on that?
I have questions on each item.
So we will pull everything, and we will add it to the end of the agenda. Okay, so where are we?
We're now on, for direction and discussion, number six, page.
So we'll move on to six A, which is the addendum to report, PDR CW oh four seventeen be received, and that all written and oral submissions received on plan of subdivision forty-two T, two thousand and sixteen dash oh eight, known as the Giorgio subdivision, were considered the effect of which help make an informed recommendation and decision that in consideration of the draft plan of subdivision application forty-two T, two thousand and six dash oh eight, for lands described as part of Lot eighteen, Plan fifty-five, geographic township of Benteck, in the town of Hanover, the county, county, great county committee of the whole approves this plan of subdivision to create a total of sixty-seven detached dwelling lots and two blocks of up to fifty-nine townhouses, subject to the conditions set out in the notice of decision. Put that on the floor. Counselor Barfoot, second, or Counselor Mackey? It's now up for discussion and presentation by Scott Taylor.
Great. Thanks, Warden Halliday, and members of the committee. So I'll try to not duplicate some of the details we've already heard from Mr. Scott and Mr. Davidson, but I do want to give you an outline and an analysis of the planning aspects of this development, because it has generated a fair bit of discussion over the past few years, as we've heard. So the lands are highlighted up there in teal, they are on the northwest end of Hanover, they're about eight point four hectares in size, and they're looking at creating a series of new lots with internal roads, as well as some road connections to Eighth Avenue North, and road connection to a future arterial road to the north, and we'll see that a little bit on this plan here, along the former rail trail lands, which would connect to Seventh Avenue, which is the county road in this case. You will notice on, on the west side of this development, there are a series of existing lots, two of which stick out further than the other ones, you can see that in, in the converse of the highlighted boundaries there. That did create some design challenges in looking at a road network here, because those, those lots aren't uniform in that regard. I would also note that the lots on, on the west side of the development here are larger in size than today's standards, and some of them were developed prior to municipal servicing coming to these properties, as such, they needed to be larger at that time. As we've heard, the subdivision is looking at a mixture of townhouses and single detached dwellings. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment was passed by the town of Hanover Council on November 5th, but I should note that zoning's not in effect yet, as we're still in the appeal period for that zoning. The zoning would look at taking the lands to residential two for the single detached dwellings, as well as residential four for the townhouses, and they would meet the standards of the town zoning bylaw in that regard. There are two small zoning exceptions in the northern end of the development, to make sure that the recommendations of the noise study were adequately addressed to buffer those northernmost lots from the Hydro One facility. The subject lands are residential in the town official plan, and they are primary settlement area in the county official plan. What you have up there now is the proposed plan of subdivision. As Mr. Davidson explained, there is a road stub in the form of Street B roughly in the center of that property that would head south. There's also a possible future extension to Eighth Ave. North, which currently dead-ends the, what we'll call the Tedford property, as well, in the northern end of the development, there'll be a road connection to a, a future arterial road, which would connect back out to the county, county road in that regard. I would flag that this was highlighted even when we had our initial discussions with, with this council back in two thousand and seventeen about the lack of, of road accesses into this development. Currently, there's only Eighteenth Street North, and so it was felt through the, the development process that an additional access would be beneficial for, for both routine traffic and also on the off-chance that emergency service vehicles needed to access this development, and, and there was a blockage in the current Eighteenth Street North. We did get a number of routine comments from, from the agencies circulated on this application. The only one that was, was atypical in this regard would be Hydro One. They did raise initial concerns about the noise, which is why, as Mr. Davidson noted, there was a, a noise study done following the there was a, a noise study done following the public meeting, to look at buffering the noise. The rest of the agencies did provide either no concerns, or they provided draft planned conditions that have been included attached to this report. We also worked very closely with our county transportation services department on this. At present, all, all traffic would funnel back out to the county road on Eighteenth Street. If the subdivision were approved, some of it would also connect to that arterial road. Transportation services have noted that there would be an exemption needed to their, their intersection policy, based on the separation distance between the future arterial road and, and the current Eighteenth Street North. They also clarified that the road should meet at a ninety-degree angle. The current rail lands where the road is being built don't hit that ninety-degree angle, so there would be some design changes there. We also worked very closely with Town of Hanover staff on this one. I ended up providing local and county planning advice on this one, but the town staff were great to deal with. They also had the engineering peer reviewed on this development, and they did go out to a legal opinion on the servicing and stormwater pieces with respect to the, the land ownership to the south. We got lots of public comments on this one, and that's great. We've been receiving public comments even after this agenda was published, so there is, in fact, one name that's not on that list, and that is Laura Lee and, and Dan Bruton, and I'll share some of their comments with you in the comment summary. We did hear from, from residents on the, on Eighth Avenue North. We also heard from one resident to the east, who had concerns about access to the future industrial lands, and as we heard, we, as we've spoken about, we heard from, from the Tedford family, as well as Quest of Planning consultants on their behalf. And I should just clarify that the meeting that was held with Town Council on November fifth was a council meeting and not a public meeting, so members of the public and the Tedford family weren't given the opportunity to, to speak unless they booked a deputation in that regard. We did hear a, a number of concerns on this. I would say the largest amount of comments we heard were with respect to the, the traffic and, and both vehicular and, and the lack of sidewalks in the area. One of the concerns in this regard from the neighbors had to do with the fact that their existing Eighth Ave. North is a dead end at, at, at both ends of the road, both the north and the south of the road. As such, they've become accustomed to living on a fairly quiet street, which, you know, a lot of us would desire to live on a quiet street, just like that, and certainly I empathize with anybody who's, who's seeing change to their neighborhood in that regard. And so they had some questions about both whether or not there would be a second access to the development, and also would sidewalks be included, and that'll be addressed just a little further in my presentation. As we heard, we had, we had comments from the landowner to the, to the south with respect to road access to their property, and whether or not a shared access road was possible. Mr. Davidson has taken us through the, the chronology of events, and indicating that the parties did meet, and, and an agreement could not be reached in that regard. We also heard comments with respect to the servicing, and whether or not an easement was going to be sought with the landowner to the south. There were concerns about noise. We've received, received some comments about the possibility for drainage and flooding. Some of the residents on Eighth Avenue North have noted that that road is already wet, and so they have concerns with adding new development here, and what potential that would bring. We heard some comments about the location of the existing, or, location of the future community mailbox. Certainly, there was lots of comments on the proposed housing types that we're considering here, as well as the lot sizes and lot density. As I noted, some of those existing lots were, were developed prior to services being installed, so they are larger lots, and, and the density that's being proposed was undesirable to some of the current residents. In that regard, there was concerns about, about property values, and about the appearance of the subdivision, the aesthetics in particular. There was concerns from the landowner to the south about the impacts on farming. Mr. Scott noted that, that he raised the fact that section fifty-one twenty-four C of the Planning Act was not addressed in the staff report, which I wrote to Town of Hanover Council. There's been some concerns about the timeframe for construction in this regard, and more recently, in terms of the concerns that aren't summarized in this presentation. The Brutons requested clarification on Block seventy, and what the use of that block will be. They requested clarification on the final grading of the cell, of the subdivision with respect to elevation adjacent to their property. They wondered where the parkland was. They too requested additional sidewalks on Eighth Ave. North. They had questions about tree removal, about the lot sizes, and about the property values. So with respect to some of these comments, staff have, have tried to be thorough, as you'll notice by this presentation, in, in, in trying to address these concerns, because we realize that, that for those neighbors that are currently living there, if the subdivision were approved, it could be definitely a change to their neighborhood. And with respect to the traffic and the sidewalks, as Mr. Davidson noted, there was a, a traffic impact study done, as well as an addendum to that study, to consider both things like whether or not there'd be backups in, in trying to get on or off of the county road, but also safety. And, and the traffic impact study did actually recommend that a second access wasn't needed. In fact, what they recommended was boulevarding Eighteenth Street North, which would allow for a bit of a divide, such that it would be less likely that a blockage would block the entire intersection. For safety reasons, and, and for some practical reasons, neither county nor town staff were enthralled with that idea. The town in their official plan, in Schedule C of their official plan, already shows an arterial road to the north, and, and rather than widening Eighteenth Street, it was felt preferable to, to go ahead and construct a portion of that arterial road to provide the second access, and, and leave Eighteenth Street as is, with the exception of the town has offered to construct sidewalks on Eighteenth Street in response to some of the neighbors' concerns. There would also be sidewalks constructed throughout the development at, at the developer's expense in that regard. With respect to the servicing, there is existing capacity, both in terms of the water and sewer in this regard. As we heard, there is a, a servicing connection coming from the south. We've talked about this with, with the Tedfords, and, and the town has talked with the Tedfords, noting that aside from this plan of subdivision process, there would need to be further discussions on either a future easement or future road allowance, perhaps, in this regard. But through this plan of subdivision process, there'll be no need to disturb the Tedford lands. Those services won't need to be dug up or, or anything else in that regard. With respect to the farming on the Tedford lands, the proposed subdivision won't impact their, their right to, to use the property as it's currently used in a lawful fashion. The connectivity with the lands to the south, this has been a major sticking point. The parties met very early on, on to look at what the road network should look like in this regard. As we heard, the, the parties were unable to come to an agreement, but this wasn't taken lightly. There was meetings, and then even after, after the meetings, there was further justification requested from the proponent and, and their engineers and planner, as to how the road pattern they were proposing would efficiently service the area, both in terms of connections to existing development, but also connections to potential future development on the Tedford lands. There would be two connections to the Tedford lands, and this would open up their property to, to Eighteenth Street North, as well as the arterial road. So although an agreement was not reached, certainly, it, it wasn't taken lightly, and staff have considered this, along with, with the staff at the Town of Hanover and their peer reviewer, to ensure that a, an efficient road pattern is designed. When we look at these type of developments, where we have two neighboring development properties, inevitably, one developer always has to go first, and, and sometimes that creates conflict with the other potential developer on the other side. In this case, county practice has been to ask first developer to design and, and that's efficient, servicing the also provincial property. We certainly haven't asked through the door to, to certainly go through and, and design a neighbor's property well, but we make sure whatever we're doing on the first property undue prejudice, in, in my opinion, relying on, and, and the engineer, I think, is on duly Tedford property in that regard. With respect to the considerable, the county, or, the community mailbox, there's a conditional approval there that would require both the approval of the town and candidate holder, that's, that's, that he has talked about, has addressed the noise concerns. There will be two exceptions in the north, which require only one-story housing to be built, as well as some fencing in that regard. With respect to the drainage and the flooding, the post develops into the stormwater facility in the, will not exceed the pre-development flows, and in fact, the engineer, the developer, know that this should help improve some of the existing drainage issues on Eighth Ave. North, that some of the, the neighbors work about in that regard, so should alleviate some of the existing concerns as well. With respect to the density and, and the housing type, there was a lot of thought put into the design of the subdivision to, to try to buffer the existing single detached residential dwellings in that regard. As Mr. Davidson stated, that's why the, the townhouse dwellings were kept on the far end of this subdivision, and what we tried to do was have the, the single detached residential dwellings abut other single detached residential dwellings. No doubt, it will be at a slightly more dense lot fabric than currently exists, but this would be aligned with the town's plan, the county's plan, and in my opinion, the provincial policy statement in that regard. Sorry. I should also note that the, the lot sizes being proposed here are similar to other lot sizes being proposed in service communities across the county, and similar to other proposals in the Town of Hanover right now. With respect to Mr. Scott's comments about section fifty-one sub twenty-four of the Planning Act, he's completely correct. Those, those comments weren't addressed in, in my report to Town Council, which was recommending approval of the zoning. There has, however, been a lengthy discussion on that in my county staff report here, and that's available. And as I said, I, I do feel that the, the connection between these subdivisions is adequate in that regard, and, and that the, the developments do conform to the, the criteria under the Planning Act and, and the official plans in that sense. With respect to property values, this is something that we hear on, on a number of different types of applications. Although it's difficult for the neighbors to, to hear, because certainly I understand why that's first and foremost, one of their primary concerns, it's not something that county staff can consider in, in our decision in that regard. There's nothing in the county plan, the provincial policy statement, or the Planning Act, that would allow us to, to speculate on property values, and, and therefore influence our, our recommendations in that regard. As such, after going through the relevant documents in terms of the legislation and the policy, county staff are of the opinion that the subdivision does have regard to matters of provincial interest, it's consistent, consistent with the provincial policy statement, and conforms to the relevant official plans, and represents an appropriate development standard within the town zoning bylaw. We're recommending that this report be received. We would stress that item number two there certainly isn't lip service. We have paid a lot of attention to the neighbors' comments and concerns in this regard. Through some of the concerns that were raised, it's resulted in, in an additional access being included. It's also resulted in, in sidewalks throughout, as well as sidewalks on, on some of the existing roads, and, and the noise study being done. So there were certainly changes made as a result of the feedback we received, and we are recommending draft approval, subject to the conditions that are laid out attached to the staff report in that regard. That's all I have, but I'd certainly be happy to take any questions.
Scott, a great presentation, very comprehensive. Counselor Wright, you have some questions.
Thank you, Warden. Scott, would you, could you put the graph up on the board, please, the plan? That one, yeah. Run me through the road system again, just.
Sure. I'll see if I can do this.
That's going to be opened up at the, at the north end up there?
So in this case, there'll be a future road connection here. I don't know if you can see that little red dot on the screen there, and that will connect to an arterial road that then connects out to the county road roughly over here. I can show you on the air photo in just a second here. These roads in the center would all be new, but then there would be a stub left to the south here, on what's known as Street B, and there would also be a stub left, which is currently there, to the south on what's known as Eighth Avenue North. So maybe I'll just take you back to the air photo.
The, the arterial road isn't there yet, though.
The arterial road isn't there yet, so it would come on these rail lands. It would meet the county road at a fifty-degree angle, and what's being proposed through the recommended conditions of draft approval, is that this proponent would pay for fifty percent of the arterial road, and the town would pay for the other fifty percent, and that would be constructed along with this plan of subdivision. So there is a plan in place, that should the subdivision be approved, that, that arterial road would be put in, such that it could handle some of the, the construction traffic as well, so we're not running that traffic through the, the existing residential areas.
Okay, now, on that plan, at the end of what I think is, is, the street to the west that runs north and south, I don't see a name on it, but there is a, a road. At the very end of that road, there's a cul-de-sac, up in the corner there. Why would they not, why would you not open up that cul-de-sac?
Sure. I, i- in this case, what's being shown there is, is the existing cul-de-sac. The road would, in fact, be opened up, and it would connect up there.
Would be opened up.
Yeah, so the road, Eighth Avenue North currently dead ends roughly there, and roughly there, but through the subdivision, it would be extended to the north, and if the Tedford family or a future owner decided to develop their property to the south, then it could be extended to the south as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good, those are very good questions. So, any other comments? Counselor Frostbruck?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Scott. So when I looked at the staff report, the page numbers are based on the PDF, so my page says thirty-eight. Staff response to public and agency comments. Since the public meeting, town and county staff have been working closely with the owners' development team to address the comments heard by members of the public and agencies. A quick summary of staff's responses follows prior to the more thorough policy analysis. So if you could clarify that, and then additionally, when I looked at the link of the related documents, should we see the minutes from the public meeting, which I believe was March twentieth, twenty-seventeen, and the notice for the public meeting says revised? So there's a revised servicing and stormwater management report dated July twenty-seventeen. So I wonder, really, if, if the public meeting took place prior to all of the information being finalized, have we, in fact, satisfied our requirement for public consultation? So those are some questions that I have. And then the other one was, does the planning advisory committee play a role in, in commenting on any of this as well? Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure, I'll, thank you for your questions, great questions. I'll try to address some of those. With respect to your first question about the staff response, what we tried to do in this section was to provide some very specific responses to individual concerns, such that a member of the public that was reading this wouldn't have to know that, hey, in order to hear about traffic, I need to flip to the section of the PPS or the county plan. So we grouped it by subject matter, and then following that, that section, we went into the policy analysis. So in the policy analysis, you get into an examination of section two of the Planning Act, and fifty-one twenty-four of the Planning Act, and then the PPS and the county plan and the town plan. So hopefully, through this, I, I realize that it's a very long report, and, and a, a difficult read for some, perhaps, but hopefully, people could, could skim to the sections they had an interest in, based on some of the subheadings in the report. With respect to the, the public meeting minutes, there was a link to the meeting minutes directly in the report. They are, it was Hanover's meeting, it wasn't the county's meeting, so the, the minutes are on Hanover's website as well. But if, if, if we should be including them on our county website, then we can certainly add them to that page as well. With respect to the timing of the public meeting, which was March twenty-seventeen, and some of the subsequent information that came out, you are correct, following the public meeting, there were some additional reports done in terms of addendum reports and clarifications, as well as the noise study. These were done in relation to the public comments and concerns that were heard. They were then posted on the county's website for review. Prior to the town hosting their council meeting on November fifth, where this topic was first sort of brought back into the public forum, the town and the county collaborated on a notice to all those that had participated in the development process, to say, by the way, these matters are going to, to our respective councils, and we gave the dates and times for that. We also listed the procedure for, for requesting deputation status for those meetings, because neither of them are, are public meetings as defined by the Planning Act. And we also noted that we're, we would welcome any further comments. And so although some people chose not to speak at these meetings, I have been receiving emails since then with some further questions and clarifications. emails since then with some further questions and clarifications. So the design of the subdivision, as a result of those addendum reports, didn't change significantly, other than the fact that it was clarified that a second road access would be included to the arterial road to the north, but the lot fabric at that time didn't change in any significant fashion. As such, when we talked about this with town staff, we didn't feel it necessary to hold a whole new public meeting, but we did want to make all those that were concerned aware that this matter was coming back forward for discussion. I should also note here, with respect to folks like the Brutons who've submitted comments this week, they moved to the area after the first public meeting was held, or the only public meeting, I should say, was held. So they weren't able to speak at that initial meeting. I've encouraged them to submit comments, and that's why I took time to read out their comments today, because they hadn't previously made their comments in a public forum. So, you know, although there hasn't been a second public meeting, the opportunity for input has certainly been there, and I applaud the neighbors that have taken the time to share their concerns and their comments in that regard, and we've tried to issue responses to each of them.
Thanks, Scott, for that update. Counselor Ardell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. When you mentioned about the arterial road to the north, I believe you said the developer would pay the 50%, and the town would pay the 50%. So Hannover, I believe, does not have development charges. So is there going to be, maybe this is town's time to look at development charges and looking for new roads and money coming in instead of other taxpayers having to pick up the tab for other issues? But I'm just, you know, looking at these new roads coming in, and development charges might look pretty nice after a while. For, just to comment, that some of the, rest of the horseshoe has development charges, and it might help to do some of those new roads so that you have the ingress and egress and safety.
That comment is, Scott, do you want to?
In this case, I certainly can't speak for the town in that regard. You are correct, they don't have development charges at the town level. What's being proposed here is, oops, a portion of a arterial road which would connect up here, but then, once it hits the development roughly around here, it would come out kind of this way into the future industrial lands here. So although the developer will be paying for a portion, and the town will be paying for a portion, that will only be the first portion, and then it's in the town's official plan longer term that it will connect further east in that regard to open up new development lands for industrial purposes. So your point is obviously well-taken in terms of the development charges, but it's being designed at this stage for a specific purpose, to feed into a bigger purpose down the road, pardon the pun.
Thanks for that. Thanks for all the comments. Any other comments? Counselor McCain?
Thank you. Just looking at both of the drawings, and I'm taking a look, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a suggestion to the property owner to the south to buy the one particular lot that's on the end of the bubble on the, if we go to the next one, on the very bottom right-hand corner? And that would be able to make a circular, if there's room between, to go between it and the pond?
This one, this one here?
That's right. If there's room to put that road right around and around that pond, that may help with some of the access to the lands to the south, but just, it's just a comment, that's all.
Thanks, John, for that insight. Counselor Patterson is holding, just smiling?
Thank you, Warden. First of all, I want to say, Scott, excellent job, very thorough. I appreciate you, everything you've done for the town of Hannover. Yes, our new council will be looking at development fees. That was part of our discussion at orientation. And I do want to say this subdivision will help us with our housing needs, and especially with attainable and affordable housing. It's unfortunate that the property owners to the south could not reach an agreement, but I do not believe that they are inhibited in any way from their own future development. Thank you.
That way? Any other comments? Well, that's Counsel Akles.
Scott, the first presentation this morning from Mr. Scott was indicating that we should delay this. And I'm confused with the presentation of all the information as to why we should delay this, other than the fact that the individual that is kind of opposing this certainly has the option to make a delay if he wants to appeal it. Am I reading more into this than what I should be?
In this regard, I don't know if I want to speculate as to what you may or may not be reading into it, but I will say that.
You learned a lot on planning day.
In this case, I will say that, you know, I would agree with Mr. Scott's position if there had been no further, no previous discussions on this between the two landowners. You know, ideally, as much as possible, the county and the town want to facilitate those discussions, and they want to encourage neighboring parties to talk. But in this case, they've been talking on and off for a number of years now. Mr. Davidson didn't go into detail, but one of the roadblocks, if you will, to a shared road came with respect to differing development timeframes. So if Mr. Davidson's client wanted to develop within the next year or so, and Mr. Scott's client didn't want to develop for another 15 years, sort of, who builds that road? On whose lands is that road situated? Is it split halfway in between? And more importantly, who pays for that road? And if one developer wants to proceed now and another has no interest in developing, then that becomes a crucial question. In this case, they did design the stubs coming to that road to connect it, but they couldn't agree on the shared road. You are entirely right, Counsel Akles, that should the landowner to the south feel passionate about this issue, they could appeal this development, both at zoning stage and the OP stage. But at this stage, based on the matters that have been put forward to date, staff don't see the benefit in further deferring this matter, because we're not certain that additional discussions between the two parties would be fruitful.
Thank you. Just a further comment. The infrastructure, and I guess maybe this is maybe through you over towards Hannover, not knowing a lot of their infrastructure and capacity. The capacity thing isn't, the infrastructure into this area 10 years, 12 years ago that it was put in, and it was sized at that point in time to future, for that future, to be able to service that future development. But it's not like it was done 50 years ago, before any of the residents were there. It was very much acknowledged at that time when that infrastructure went in there, when the water and sewer was supplied up into that area, to the Tedfords, to the Brutons, to all the residents, that it was to the capacity to service that development area. Right?
Future ready.
Through you, yes, you are correct, Counselor Akles. That was put into, within mind for future development of the northern lands past, over, past the river. So you are correct, it's there for this subdivision and future.
So everybody gets an A+ in thinking head. Counselor Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Real quick, I agree with everything that Scott said, and you know what? There's been boundary disputes with landowners throughout generations and centuries, and it doesn't matter if it's in town, it doesn't matter if it's over a line fence in the country. We both know that some neighbors are not going to get along with others. This deal has taken a long time to put together, been looked at from all angles. The town's happy, the proponents happy. They've made attempts to agree with the neighbor to the south, but everything else in the municipal act has been adhered to. So I don't know why we would defer this or hold this project up any longer, recognizing it started in 2012 and we're here today.
Counselor Bell for that? Alson Posbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Scott, I apologize. I'm not sure if you covered my question about the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee. And I just wonder, how does their mandate fit or not fit their commenting on this, please?
Yeah, I apologize, I did miss that question. In this case, the terms of reference for that committee and the way we've been working with that committee hasn't been to bring individual development projects before that committee. We've been bringing higher-level policy initiatives and strategic initiatives before it, so there were discussions with that committee on recolor gray and other projects that the county's been working on, but there weren't individual, there hasn't been discussions on individual development applications with that committee. I should note that the matter did go before the Town's Planning Advisory Committee as well, who offered their feedback on it, but they have a little different mandate than our county planning and economic development advisory committee in that regard.
For clarifying that? Any other comments? Okay, that being said, I'll call the motion, all in favor of passing this today. My motion is carried. Thank you, Scott, good presentation. Thank you for all the other presenters today. Okay, we'll move on to the report, FR CW 2418, regarding a corporate financial update and year-end projection as of September 30th, 2018, be received, and our director of everything. Mr. Wepler will present that. Put the motion on the floor. Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Barfoot. Kevin, please proceed.
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, this is our second update we've done since the one we presented in July, which had the May, so this is up to the end of September. So I'm just going to run through some highlights and then can ask questions, and I'll try to clarify where I can. So overall, we're projecting a net surplus of operating capital of about $172,000, based on our September 30th financials. Now, this surplus includes the estimated use of 800, almost $812,000 in federal gas tax, and that's to offset the tender results that we incurred in our road construction projects in 2018. And that was a report, those have been brought forward each time those awards have happened. And so without that gas tax, we would have been sitting here with approximately a $640,000 deficit, so. So, yeah, this report is trying to summarize, based on what has occurred to date and what we're projecting to happen in the remainder of the year. Some highlights, administration, positive variance about $215,000, that including capital. That mainly is staffing vacancies that have occurred. For example, our director of legal didn't start until October 22nd. We had his salary built in from January. Our asset management coordinator started in August, and then we've had a number of changes in the IT department as well. So on the capital side of the administration, we did have tenders for our capital infrastructure for IT that came in over budget, and those were noted in the reports, to the tune of about $60,000. And then as well, we had an item that I brought to council that I, based on our IT security that I wanted to proceed, and that was about $175,000, so that's in that as well. Council, we're looking at a surplus of about $30,000 currently. That mainly is a result of the professional consulting fees line for the integrity commissioner, that we've only used about $7,600 of a $29,000 budget. Information Services, it runs all our network. There has been savings on software procurement, but that was all to be funded from reserves, so it'd be just less coming out of the infrastructure reserve for our IT. Weekly indemnity and our workers' comp, those are our self-insured plans. Weekly indemnity costs are anticipated at the end of the year with a surplus of about $29,000. And our workers' compensation is projecting a year-end deficit of about $102,000. Those are similar numbers to what we reported previously, some adjustments, but again, our claims seem to be longer in term and on the length and due to those claims, what types of claims they are. So that's, and there was some, as well, there was some prior appeal claims that have hit the 2018 budget. The assessment, that is the impact billing that's charged to the county that's paid on behalf of, for all the assessment for the county of Gray. And it's based on a calculation of your total assessment versus what's the total assessment for the province, and then the number of properties as a ratio against the number of properties in the province. So my budget projection for that, it was off a little bit, so that was causing that small deficit of about $18,400. Provincial offenses, small surplus of about $55,000. Our revenues continue to be higher than budgeted, and that's a good trend from other years where it was going the other way all the time. So I'm not, some of that, I believe, is that service Canada where you are going to get your license and stuff, and those fines are now noted there, and they're getting paid, so that's helpful. Again, we're at the mercy of how those tickets are issued and when they're paid, so that, I guess, is our best guess right now. If you're looking at the financial salary and benefit costs are lower, we had planned changes with our prosecution, those haven't occurred yet, so that's why the prosecution costs are higher, if you look down on those financials. Health unit and other funding initiatives, end-of-the-year surplus of about $124,000. In the 2018 year, the 18-year, Grayberg's Health Unit received a 2% base funding increase from the ministry, which wasn't, I wasn't anticipating when we developed the budget, and I don't believe they were. So that caused us, we cost share that with Bruce County, based on 75% is paid by the ministry, and then the other 25 is cost share based on population between Bruce and Gray. So that was, would have caused us a bit of a deficit, but there's, the 2017 financials, if you look at their financial statements, there was a $130,000 surplus to, and that was Gray's portion coming back to us. So that is helping this budget, and wasn't anticipated when we set our 2018 budget. Property, looking at an overall balanced budget, we've had some hydro and some other supply line savings, but we've had some higher salary and associated benefit costs. And our capital budget for property budgets, including administration building addition and renovation, are on budget. Supplementary taxation and write-offs, projection, and this is based on the estimates that I've received from local municipal staff, is a surplus of about $218,000. So there's still adjustments that are happening, so that number could change, and so, but that's the best estimate that I could get at this time. Planning, projected to have a surplus of about $200,000 at year-end. Staff vacancy, Randy ran short for a while with staff, but a big component of this is all the anticipated application revenue that he's receiving, and I think by how often Randy and Scott are standing here, we understand why. So that's helping that budget. Agriculture, projected to have a surplus of about $10,000. That's just based on Beaver and Coyote Grant applications being lower than anticipated. Forestry budget deficit of about $30,000, that's just the, our revenues when we put our forests out for tender for harvest, they're coming in less than we had budgeted. Trails, end of the year with a surplus of about $30,000. There was a tender for grading and packing the trails, and that came in less than we had budgeted. Economic development, the operating budgets here are anticipated to be on budget. The issue here is on the capital side, is the county was successful in acquiring the Sinnum School property, and that was, we hadn't budgeted any funds for that acquisition, so that, that's why you're seeing an amount on the capital side of, for that purchase. Forest tourism, year-end surplus of about $20,000. Again, some staffing changes that have occurred and have caused some savings until replacements happened. Gray Roots, end of the year with a surplus of, a slight surplus of about $20,000. Operating is about $25,000 surplus and a $5,000 deficit in capital. Emissions were, general emissions were less than budgeted, but their school groups and kid camps and their special events have been very popular and have done well. Ontario Works, projected surplus of about $14,800. Ontario Works, projected surplus of about 14,800. They've had savings in salaries and wages and under expenditure in legal costs. Those savings are being applied against the estimated cost to continuing the transportation pilot to the end of December. So we're trying to cover that off with any savings we realize in our Ontario Works. And childcare, projected surplus of about 39,000, and that's savings in an early on budget, and program supervisor didn't get hired as soon as they anticipated. Housing, an overall projected surplus of about 101,000. The tenant revenues are better than we had budgeted. Year-end write-offs look, at this point in time, they won't be as much as we had budgeted. We have lower utility costs, we're gonna have to look at that for our 2019 budget. When we based the 2018 budget, the global adjustment rebate of 8% was only scheduled to last to the end of April, and that has continued. It hasn't ended, so that's been a benefit to those hydro costs. So we'll have to look at that for our 2019 budget. The capital budget has a shortfall of about 98,000, and that was mainly on one tender for the bath rebuilds at 225 14th Street West, where that project came in 100,000 over Long-term care, we've pretty much, in the report here, you've seen we've kind of flatlined all the operating. That's mainly to the council endorsing the Sienna continuing on with their support services. So we're now paying Sienna a monthly amount. Those were not budgeted. We had budgeted a review funding of about $68,000, but we've continued on with an agreement with them to give us support services for each of our long-term care facilities. So any surplus that we've had accumulated with either our CMI being higher or savings in hydro, et cetera, we're utilizing that to offset that unbudgeted cost for those services that Sienna Senior Living is providing to us. And paramedic services, projected to end the year with a $320,000 deficit. Some was, our grant was less than we had budgeted. We've had, we also received some PTSD funding of about 24,000 that's helped, but we've had salary and benefit costs that exceed the budget of about $189,000, and that's a result of absences or staffing changes that have had to occur. Cost of fuel and usage, and the usages were, as Kevin McNabb has presented, call volumes are up, so we're utilizing our vehicles more and gas consumption is higher, so about, that was about 53,000 of that amount. Legal and professional fees that we've had to use are higher than our budgeted by about 45,000, so. And then last is transportation services, operating projecting about a $30,000 surplus, and then the projected deficit of about 812,000 for those capital projects that councils endorse the use of federal gas tax. So overall, with all those items, we're projecting about $172,000 surplus if the trends continue that we've seen, so. And saying all that, that is, is well taking into account those surpluses and trying to get the acquisition of the Sidney School property behind us, so that helps that enterprise move forward without having that, chasing that, trying to fund that in the future in their operating budgets. So there's still other items, but they relate to the 2019 budget when it comes to that school. But overall, that's where we're at, and it appears like a lot of ups and downs, but we're trying to manage.
Oh, thank you, Kevin. That's a real comprehensive review. I'm sure all treasurers at the lower tier should take lessons. But anyhow, that's another comment. But you did a great job, and I appreciate that. Any questions of comment? John McKeen?
Thank you. So this report is to the end of September, and that deficit, sorry, that surplus, with the weather conditions that we're having right now, if this continues on to the end of the year, how much in transportation will that surplus eat up? Will likely have pennies left when we're finished?
That's hard. I guess what I qualify was is that we do have a $500,000 reserve for winter control if we do run into some issues here, so it's hard. I know even, I know Pat and them, they're watching their salt usage for one thing this year, so that's, we're hoping that things will stay in line. Based on where we are today and that, we seem to be on target still, but yeah, this seems to be an abnormal November right now, but maybe December will go the other way. I don't know.
That's right. We do have good reserves, and as you say, February will be beautiful. So anybody else want questions? Yeah, Counselor Frostbuck?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Kevin. So the attachments to the report, the first one is operating budget variance and then capital budget variance. Do we actually get, does council actually get reports that tell us final year-end actuals?
Yeah, it's contained right in the, well, I'll back up a bit here. I will come back with another report in January, which will be like a year-end transfer report. Again, we'll project where we are and what we, our surplus is deficit. But even at that point, we're still getting bills and stuff in, some bills you won't even get till February, et cetera. But then in the financial statements, in that additional package that the BDO puts together, we put in a statement, a cash basement statement in there that's showing by those, all the departments where the ending position was, and it'll show a column of surplus or deficit to from reserves in that report. So it's in that, and I believe I tried to address that when the auditors were here back in June, that there's where your actual cash position is and where you wound up. Okay?
And if I may, thank you for that. So what I, and that was kind of the understanding that I was under, that the year-end actuals, both for operating and capital, are found in the auditor's report, which isn't the same format that council gets throughout the year. So to actually compare this report and say, here's the final year-end actual, do you anticipate that that, is that a report that will come to council?
There's two, like, your financial statements are done on your amortization basis, your accrual basis, so that's the financial statements that the auditors provide, but then they supply that supplementary package, for example, that shows our reserves, how we've been doing the last five years. In that, you will find a statement that's very similar to this, that reads surplus and deficits to from reserves, and that's there.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I'm asking for is in the auditor's report?
Yeah, that's, I forget what they titled it, sorry, but yeah, it was an additional report they gave with the financial statements.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, we call the motion. All in favor? Thank you.
I'd just like to thank all the staff, like the senior management and finance staff for helping me put this together. I can't do this by myself. As much as I would try, there's just way too many budget and numbers, so.
There's a lot of feeds into that information, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
We will take five, and then we'll come back and we'll restart the process under section I. I think there are some people here that would like to hear that as they are here, and then they can move on. So we'll take a five-minute break. We're gonna move on to six, I, and is everybody on council comfortable making that change? I see no problems. We'll move through, and I'll put this on the floor. That report, PDRCW 4218 be received, which provides an overview of the potential partnership opportunity between Gray County and the Owensound Agricultural Society and Chatsworth Agricultural Society to create a regional agricultural learning and demonstration site directly adjacent to Gray Roots. And that support be provided in principle to explore this partnership opportunity further and to submit a NIGRS government plan amendment application to the NIGRS Commission to seek permission for establishing a regional agricultural learning and demonstration site adjacent to Gray Roots. And next page is blank.
That staff?
And that staff. I got it backwards. And that staff be directed to prepare a report for council in 2019, which would include a proposed memorandum of understanding detailing the partnership with Owensound and Chatsworth Agricultural Societies. Put that on the floor. Counselor Barfoot, Counselor Greenfield. Randy, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you very much.
To hear this project moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, committee members. So the purpose of this report is to present a potential partnership opportunity to create what is being called a regional agricultural learning and demonstration site adjacent to Gray Roots property. And thank you for entertaining and bumping this up in the agenda. We have Larry Parkin, a number of other representatives from the egg societies here with us today. We also have Everett Hall, who is the owner of the subject lands, also in the audience with us today. So staff are very excited about this potential partnership opportunity. We see a lot of synergies that this partnership could create between the egg societies and Gray County, and specifically with Gray Roots. The Owensound Egg Society and Chatsworth Egg Society have approached the county about this potential partnership opportunity. The regional agricultural learning and demonstration site could be used for residents and visitors to learn about the importance of agriculture, learn about how food is grown, and where our food comes from. In addition to being an agricultural learning and demonstration site, the site would also be host to a regional fair, as well as other agricultural-associated events. The site is located directly west of Gray Roots, and it's up there on the screen. It's also in the report as well. It's 20 acres in size, and as noted, it's just north of Gray Road 18, west of Gray The following slide is a draft concept plan that was also attached to the presentation. Just to give you an overview of what's being proposed on the site, two buildings are proposed. One building would be for office staff of the two egg societies, which would contain staff washrooms plus a large room for displaying agricultural exhibits. A second, large barn-style structure would be used to temporarily house livestock during the fair and agricultural events. The barn-style structure would also house educational displays and would be used for agricultural workshops and programs regarding current farming and food production. These structures will be constructed at the expense of the egg societies. The site would also contain a track, and parts of the site would be used for temporary parking of vehicles during the fair and the events. The site would also contain agricultural demonstration plots for educational purposes, which is something that county staff are very excited about. During the fair and other agriculture-related events, temporary tents, portable toilets would be used. However, at least 85% of the time, the site will look like a farm with agricultural demonstration plots, such as corn, wheat, and other crops, as well as an interpretive tree pathway that would demonstrate various local tree species, including an apple orchard, which you can see in the bottom left-hand corner. The corn plot would be converted to a corn maze as an agritourism use on the site during the fair event. And the corn maze, you can just see, is just south of where the proposal would be for the midway and games during the fair portion of the use of the site. The fair itself would operate a maximum of four days per year and would be located on portions of the site to minimize any impacts to adjacent land uses. And that's where you can see where the midway and games is actually further away from any surrounding residents and properties and being in the northwest corner. There may be other agricultural events that are held on the site. Some of these could be in conjunction with Gray Roots, especially where there's an agricultural element to the event. These could also include things like tractor pulls, fundraisers for the egg societies, the Grown in Gray event, which is an educational two-day event, each spring with grade-five students from local schools. Could be host to 4-H Club meetings and workshops. Could also be used for the Harvest for Hunger, which is also another fundraising event, by providing a day at the farm experience. Some other events through partnering with Gray Roots can include antique car, truck, tractor displays, art in the barn show to showcase local artists, meeting space for other agricultural organizations, steam show with threshing and sawmill displays and wood processing demonstrations, as well as possibly some other farm machinery and farm animal events. So why this location? The potential synergies with having this site beside Gray Roots would allow our residents, visitors, and our future generations to learn not only about Gray County's agricultural history, but to also learn about current agricultural practices. Visitors to Gray Roots will also be able to learn about agriculture with a hands-on approach by seeing firsthand how crops are grown, seeing livestock up and close during the fair and events, and seeing farm practices in action. The site could also be used as a space to explore and discuss agricultural innovation through the use of new agricultural practices and technology. And this, again, we see the synergies between, say, the Egg 4.0 event and being able to use the site for egg innovation and demonstration is one area that we want to explore further. Facilities can also be shared, such as buildings, parking areas, and the existing entranceway from Gray Road 18, so that way a new entranceway off of Gray Road 18 won't be required. So as you can see, the existing entranceway on Gray Road 18 to access Gray Roots, there would be a road that would be constructed to access that entranceway that would provide access to the site. During the regional fair and agricultural events, parking facilities can be shared between the two sites. Buildings and facilities that are located at Gray Roots can also be used during the fair, as well as the agricultural events, and vice versa. So again, we see just the synergies between the egg societies proposal on the site, as well as Gray Roots, are just endless in terms of the possibilities and the opportunities. In terms of the planning requirements, this property is within the NIGRS government plan area, and therefore, a NIGRS government plan amendment is required to be approved by the NIGRS government commission. The subject lands are designated as a government rural area in the NIGRS government plan. Some of the permitted uses within the government rural area fit very well with what is being proposed on the site. However, based on the site being host to a fair and other agricultural events, a NIGRS government amendment is required, as these uses are not explicitly permitted in the government rural area designation. Given the proximity to Gray Roots, and with the fair and agricultural events having, of course, agricultural elements associated with it, we believe that this site is an ideal location. We have met with the NEC staff to determine the application requirements. They've indicated that a planning justification report addressing the policies in the plan would be required to be submitted with the application. The planning report would also include traffic analysis that can be done in concert with our transportation staff, visual impact analysis, and justification for the potential loss of any agricultural lands as a result of the proposed use. So county staff can prepare this information that's required by the commission as part of the amendment application in support of this partnership, should council support this partnership in principle today. In terms of the land itself, the current owner, Mr. Everett Hall, who is in the audience today, as I mentioned, has indicated that he is willing to donate the property to Gray County and the two agricultural societies to establish this agricultural learning and demonstration site. A memorandum of understanding would be prepared and presented to council in 2019, which would detail the relationship of this partnership between the county and the two egg societies. The MOU would also include a clause to indicate that the lands would be held in trust for the egg societies, and that the lands would be transferred to the egg societies at a later date. A separate agreement for any shared access, parking, or use of the facilities would also be done between egg societies and Gray Roots, and that would also be prepared and brought forward to council. So it's recommended that support be provided in principle to explore this partnership opportunity further, and that staff be directed to assist the two agricultural societies with preparing the NIGRS government plan amendment application, and that a draft MOU be prepared and brought back to council in 2019, which would provide further details about this partnership opportunity. And we'd be happy to take any questions, and Larry Parkin is also here to help answer any questions that council may have.
Oh, thank you, Randy. That's a great presentation, dream come true, I think, for a lot of people. We're gonna take questions, we'll start with Counselor Pringle on the side.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Randy, for the presentation. I've been involved with this as a council member here over the years, and it's been a long time coming, so I'm glad we're finally to this day. I want to thank the committee and the members that have worked very hard. Their patience has been notable, for sure. So we're hoping that we can move this forward on their behalf, and I certainly am supportive of it. And thanks to Mr. Hall, he's been very patient, too, so hopefully he doesn't anytime soon want to take that offer off the table, but he's been very patient for 10 or 12 years, at least, so. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next, Scott, did you have some words from Chatsworth?
Well, Bob certainly, you know, said the bulk of what I wanted to say, but I mean, I do appreciate the work that the committees, both the Owensound Agricultural Society and the Chatsworth Agricultural Society, have done to try and break Agricultural Society, have done to try and bring this forward. I know Randy and his team have worked with them over the last few years, so it's great to see that we have this opportunity, and I certainly agree that it's a way to honor agricultural past and our future going forward, because agriculture is very important. So it's a great opportunity, and certainly thank you to Everett and Marilyn Hall for their gracious offer.
Absolutely, okay, that's great. Counselor Barfoot?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and I don't want to echo certainly what the previous two have said. I guess when I read the report, I was trying to come up with a word to express my support on it, and it was "finally." One of those ones. I know the two years that I was warden, I was trying to work hard on trying to get it, you know, moving forward, and when you've got that many players involved, it takes a lot of time, and I know we had numerous meetings with it, so this is great news. It's one of these things that, when you look at long-term, it's the right thing to do. And I look forward to the day that it gets opened.
So do I, that's a great idea. Well, Counselor McQueen, who, well, I'm going to do that side, I'm sure there's a lot of...
Certainly echo all the comments that are made. I know we had a meeting, I guess myself, Counselor Barfoot and yourself, last February or something like that, so it was good to see this coming through to county council. I know about, I'm going to say, five years ago, when NEC had a policy meeting up here, we actually had a policy meeting at Gray Roots, and the committee at that time did a presentation. I think I might be the last guy left on the NEC that was there then, so I would definitely suggest that you make a new presentation, because it was pretty powerful and impressive, and I know most, pretty much every commissioner was, it really opened up their minds, and it sort of allowed them to think that that was a great thing for what was being proposed at that time, and similar all the way through, and along with the aspects to agriculture. I know the commissioners going through, they have a bit of a task force right now reviewing agricultural policies and ideas and stuff like that, so this is a timely thing, for sure. And I know I talked to them there a few years back about the whole idea of keep the emphasis on agriculture, because that's part that is recognized in the NIGRS government plan, so, good job.
Bet you're on board.
Press stories that you should have here, and maybe through Rob...
We'll do a media release, I'm sure.
Rob, thank you.
Thanks for that. And Counselor Greenfield speaking on behalf of the agricultural community?
Randy, when I first read this report, I kind of took my breath away for a few seconds, and then I thought, was this really exciting? This is fantastic. And then, on command, everyone who has been involved, I didn't realize this had been going on for quite a long period. The location is absolutely amazing. I'll start off by saying, another reason this location is so amazing is that back in 1962, the International Plowers' March was just across the road from this location, or practically, it was very close, anyway, so there's a... I don't think anybody else here remembers 1962, right? And it was a great show. But coupled with Gray Roots, I think, down the road, this could be bigger, and no offense to Chatsworth, their Own Sound Fair, but this could be bigger than that, it can be bigger than Gray County. I think, coupled with Gray Roots, coupled with Moore's Turn, this can be the potential site to represent the past, the present, and the future of agriculture in all southern Ontario. I really want to see it over here. Thank you.
Thanks, Harley, I certainly echo my thoughts on that as well. Okay, let's go down this side, any other, yes, Counselor Body, then I'll swing around.
I'm probably going to repeat what everyone has said so far. From an Own Sound point of view, we hate seeing the fair leaving Own Sound, because it's been there forever. When you go back, I think it was 1836, 1838 Baldwin Act that set up townships, and it was all designed so the people could get to a meeting by their horse and buggy, and the fall fairs were all set up so the people could attend by horse and buggy, and those days are long gone, so it makes sense that we regionalize this and do it better. No offense to the Own Sound Agricultural Society, but the last couple of years, the Fall Fair, maybe the last 10, has maybe more focused on a Midway and less so on those other events, and maybe it's my age, but it's more fun to go into the arena and see the quilts, and see the art, and see some of the plants that are grown versus what it used to be. No, not those kinds of plants. As we look at Gray County, and so much for economic development is around agriculture, agricultural 101, this becomes so much more important, and to be able to change the focus, re-energize the fall fairs, regionalize, and having it focusing more on agriculture, I think is going to be a big benefit, and echoing, I think, what Harley just said, plowing matches are going to be so expensive, nobody wants to host them. And at some point, I can see where they're going to drop off, and we've got something permanent that's very much focused in agriculture, and how that's going to become more of a focus and a really major thing going forward, so I think this is great. We can't thank the Hall's enough for this type of activity and all the other activities in our Gray community over the years, you know, putting our community perhaps ahead of profit by donating things like this, and we certainly appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thanks for that, that's really great. John, McQueen?
Thank you, and I think it's a great project, and something that Counselor Body just mentioned, removing the fair out of Own Sound and into a more rural area. I don't know what the noise bylaws would be in that particular municipality, but I mean, I think we should check that out and make sure that both agricultural societies understand if there needs to be changes or amendments to those for this site, just to make sure that whenever something comes up, that that part of it's already been taken care of. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure White's got that under... Yes, Counselor Ardell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I'm very happy to see that you're putting an orchard in there, so, being an orchard grower... A little far from the Blue Mountains, but Georgian Bay fruit growers, we have lots of expertise in that, and also, Mr. Vale has lots of expertise in that, too, so I would nominate him to, since he's in close proximity, to maybe help look after that. But I think what you probably should do, and it's just my comments, have some heritage and some of the new varieties. Heritage apples are huge now, because they're being used for cider, and they're very hard to come by, but the new varieties are up and coming, and I think those are the ones that need to be showcased, especially Salish, which I got a first in, and Crimson Crisp, and Honey Crisp, and Galas, and Ambrosia, those are the new up-and-coming ones, and on the Vitrellis system, maybe you could do that as well, because I think that's the new way of farming. You went from 125 trees to the acre to now 4,000 trees to the acre, so it's a new way of growing, and for poor people, this is the future. That's what you need to do.
Let's eat crabbles, because it makes great jelly.
And aid them politicians.
Kevin, did you have a few wonderful...
If I could, thank you very much. Am I reading into this, and this may be more towards Mr. Parkin and Mr. Gamble back there, because you said that it was going to be four days for the fair? Well, the Chatsworth Fall Fair, it's universally, internationally recognized, and it goes on for a week and a half, so I don't, are we going to shrink it down to four days, two days for Chatsworth and two days for Own Sound? Or are we looking at that...
I think it was minimum, wasn't it?
Amalgamation. Just a quick question, and then I've got a couple of other comments.
Good. Did you want to make a few comments?
Larry?
Yes, for sure. First time I've ever been in here, and it's a little overwhelming, but...
It's okay, it's going to be the last time for me, so you're fine.
We're savoring the moments.
Yes, okay.
Two historic moments, we're fine.
Four days, yes, that may turn into more than that. Now, the reason would be if we are just putting this together, if this goes ahead, and we appreciate partnering with Gray County. We hope we have as much to offer them as they are, you know, willing to offer to us. Now, the four days, yes, in Own Sound, we run it basically two and a half days, in Chatsworth, it's, now, Own Sound, it seems like it's busy for a week, because we're taking it apart, as well as setting it up, and there's a lot of movement of infrastructure in and out, and that'll happen in this new place, too. I believe with the extra traffic on the road, we may be able to spread it out, actually an extra day or two, and have less people come in at a time. But we're all volunteers that put on this fair, and it's going to be the volunteers and the directors, and as a partnership, yous will be involved on the board as well. So we appreciate everything Randy has done to put this together.
Thank you very much, Larry. John, did you want to have...
Oh, I got cut off? Okay, fine.
Sorry, I didn't realize that...
Yeah, I said I reserved that, that was the one question, and...
But anyhow, go ahead.
Well, if I've got an hour, yeah, lunch is going to be late, I can use that. That's at a later point in this meeting.
Don't take me literally, please. Go ahead.
I think that we should get on to this vote, because Mr. Pringle, and Mr. Barfoot have said it, Al said that he's been on it for the last two years. My first term as warden in 2008, Everett, this is when it really started, I'm still surprised that you still own the land after this long that we've been going. It has been something that's been discussed on an ongoing basis, and I think that was the initial discussion, was in 2008, and congratulations, but obviously, you're a Mike Hogue, too, so get up here and say something.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Come up to the microphone, would you?
Genesis of this idea was, we, Chatsworth and the Own Sound Ag Society, were trying to look to the future and future planning, and we actually had a meeting at Gray Roots, and Kevin was there, and Don Lewis was there.
Yes.
And some of you will remember Don. And Don said, what you need is a regional fair. That's the way the fairs are surviving, south of the border, you need to think bigger. And I was fortunate enough to own the land next door, and it seemed to be, to me and my wife, to be a no-brainer, that this would be a good idea.
Well, thank you for...
I remember that meeting, Kevin.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Everett.
John, did you want to have a few words?
Just real quick, hard act to follow, Mr. Hall has definitely been a huge supporter not only of the Own Sound Fair, but of agriculture in the area. And the Parkins, I don't know, their passion and, I guess, dogged determination to make Own Sound better, to the Gamble family from Chatsworth and others, that unfortunately, the arena will not allow them to keep that Chatsworth facility and that fair going. So the amalgamation of all these good things is only good for Gray County, it's only good for agriculture in Gray County, it's good for the fair societies, and it's going to be great for the public. And going forward to have a regional fair, and something that we can call a center showpiece in Gray County, will only, shall we say, bring forth good things and educate our youth that are able to go to the fair and see different demonstrations, it's just a natural fit. And Randy, congratulations for moving this ahead. I was hoping this would get to this term before we had to leave here, but I think it's just a win-win for everybody, and I do hope that the SCARTM commission sees it the same way, because it's just such a natural fit.
Thank you, John, that was a good summary, for sure. Counselor Fosbrook, and then Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, too, agree, it's very exciting, for all the reasons that have been discussed. The proposal to have this transaction, or the property to be held in trust until a future date, and the suggestion or statement that Gray is going to be a partner in this, when the transition from trust, the ownership changes hands, how will that impact the partnership?
We hope that the partnership will continue, and I think that's, we would want to conclude some of those details as part of the partnership agreement, to say that even when we get to a point where we're transferring the lands back to the Ag societies, that the partnership and the synergies continue, because the whole reason why to have it beside Gray Roots is because it is beside Gray Roots. And the synergies that we see between this site and the site, as well as the points that have been raised here today, that's why we see this location as an ideal location. So we'd be looking to add some of those details as part of that partnership agreement, to say that we're not done when we just hand over the land, it's, we want that partnership and those synergies to continue, for sure.
And if I may, do you have an anticipated timeframe for that?
That detail is still to be discussed, we've been talking about, say, the 10, 15 years, and so different years have been discussed, but we'll bring that forward in further detail as part of the next staff report.
Part of that. Larry, did you want to have a comment on that?
Thank you, I'd just like to comment on that, too, that we figure in the, as a partnership that's starting out this way, we would work out the details as we're going, and continue on with membership on the board, the fair boards, and we don't see this partnership ending at any time. The working relationship and how we work together, it'll fold in quite well. I know we will have certain restrictions from the NEC, just like Gray Roots, but with county helping us to manage those, we feel we'll be able to survive and be the success story that everyone here thinks it'll be, and that our committee has thought it would be. It's just took us a long time to get to this point. Thank you for that question, though.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's great that we can have our final council meeting, bring this to fruition, and so, with that being said, I'm going to ask the Oak, sorry, Counselor Hicks, sorry, short-term memory loss there, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question was along the lines of Counselor Fosbrook, so the lawyer in me is interested in this whole, why the lands are going in trust rather than directly to the agricultural societies, and I'm sure someone smarter than I will figure out the issue around merger, because we own the lands, buddy.
Yes.
Those are all great questions, and we'll have to explore those further, and we've already had some of those discussions with our Director of Legal Services on that, to ensure the best route forward, whether or not it is holding in trust or another mechanism in terms of the county initially owning the lands, but then transferring it to the Ag societies in the future. So that's something that, we have to work out those details, and we'll be working out those details in concert with, in consultation with our Director of Legal Services on that.
Thanks, Randy, on that. Go ahead.
And it would be maybe appropriate to note, too, that the societies themselves are governed by the Agriculture and Horticultural Societies Act, and so there are some specifics in there that need to be attended to as well, and I think this, the path it's put forward here will allow us to have regard, for each of the societies to have regard to their obligations under the act, and come to an orderly transition. I think there are just a number of considerations there about how they're able to hold assets, et cetera.
Good, thanks for bringing that up.
We've already had some preliminary discussions with the OMAF rep who looks after the Ag societies in the province, so she's aware of what we're looking at potentially on this property, and I think it would be a good contact going forward to make sure that anything that's put forward will be in concert with that act.
Thank you. Counselor Pringle has a final word before we call the vote?
Thank you, we've made note of many of the individuals involved, and I don't want to miss some of them that have played an important part. Heather Parkin is Larry's better half, and she certainly has been a big part in this as well. And Henry Feenster, sitting at the back, recognized in our area right around Chatsworth as Mr. Tractor Pull, and he's been, I know, in the works of this right from day one. Brian Gamble, as well, is going to be sitting right up here at your next meeting, he is the new deputy mayor of the township at Chatsworth. And not to forget Jeff Gilkinson, who is a past president of the Own Sound Ag Society, and a strong supporter of Ag in the county and 4-H. Didn't want to miss them, for sure.
Oh, that's great.
Larry mentioned that Henry's also co-chair of the...
Right.
...as well, which is great.
We've got it organized to have a little bit of a group picture here, so our communications man, Rob Hatton, will make sure that we capture the moment there, okay? So I'm going to call the vote, all in favor, unanimous decision, thank you very much for everybody. Thank you very much for everybody. And let's take a brief moment to have a picture. Well, it was a real honor for that section there. So we're going to go back into Kevin's corporate budget overview and background. And then we'll break for lunch after that. That report, FRCW 2518, regarding the 2019 corporate budget overview and background be received and that any additional revenue generated by the 2018 assessment growth by exceeding the average of the previous five years be budgeted as a transfer to the capital infrastructure reserve for future transportation services, road and bridge infrastructure capital needs and that this be included in the 2019 budget for council's consideration as part of the 2019 budget review. Put that on the floor. Councillor Burley, Councillor Ardell, Kevin, it's all yours.
I didn't plan it this way after such an uplifting thing as that and then had to fall with budget. Thank you, Warden. Yeah, so here's, this was our 2019 corporate budget overview and background. And just to give council members just some awareness of what the 2019 budget is looking like for funding requirements. So council and staff have historically planned the budget timelines for early adoption. Last year, we tried, like, we had a budget workshop in the first week of December and stuff in the hopes, you know, that we can get a budget passed and get tenders out sooner and things like that. But this year with, that's being deferred until January 31st and then due to the municipal election and a new county council being sworn in on December 4th. The background on this is back in July or August, staff put together a budget assumption. We go through what we think our, for example, our insurance costs will be, what we think utility costs are going, fuel, audit fees, other inter-functional IS costs to run our IT network, et cetera. Wage and benefit assumptions, et cetera. Those are circulated and used as a basis to build these budgets. And then from that, staff have put together a budget here that I'm using as the reference here of where we're at. So this, and this budget right now is based on our most current information that we have. And in saying that, there's ongoing things with provincial government right now with social services and stuff. And we do not know what that means to us yet. So these numbers could change. They're based on our current, what staff currently knows and contemplate it's going to happen. So based on what we've put together, we're looking at a net levy requirement of about $57,300,000 roughly or a net tax levy increase of 2.23%. And that is based on an estimated $551,000 in assessment growth that occurred in 2018. What that assessment growth is based on is I've taken the last five years and averaged it and it's used that as a basis of where I think this is going to come in at. We're looking at, like I said, $1.8 million, which would have been a 3.25% increase with that growth of $551,000, brings it down to that $1.2 million or a 2.23% increase. The assessment growth number I spoke to is, we've had some initial numbers provided to us, but it won't be finalized until December, for sure. At that time, we can bring back exactly what the growth number is. So we'll have it for that session in January. Okay. Impacts and stuff, for the non-union and union, we've been using that formula that we have put forward for our wage calculations. And just to remind everyone, that was based on our comparative groups, Consumer Price Index, Olmer CPI, what the county union increases have been, and then a municipal survey that's done by McDowell and Associates. And it's just the average of that, and that's what we've used. And that seems to have worked pretty well so far. The budget also proposed additional funding for our, the new Corporate Wellness Initiative. Amanda was here and presented that to council. And previously discussed about upgrades to our IT. Those are all being captured in this. And we're trying to ensure our network security and disaster recovery and our business continuity planning is in good shape, go forward. POA, we're showing some additional revenues based on what we're seeing in 2018. So that's helping the budget. The healthcare initiatives budget, this is where we've been in the past have funded hospital capital work. It was based on a council motion where that half of 1% of our levy would be put towards healthcare capital funding. So right now, council has had two delegations come forward looking for funding. So what I've done so far with this budget, with this draft, has shown the half of 1%, which is roughly $277,000, in there as a transfer to reserve. And then what staff will bring a report with, and we'll try to figure out our ways of who we're going to fund and how much out of that. Or if council wishes to do something different, they'll have that here in front of them for their discussion and their input. Okay. So the, again, we've put the Georgian College, the $200,000. That'll be the fifth of the 10 installments for the support of the college's marine emergency duty center. Forestry revenue, we've reduced that just based on our last three years of forest revenue, what we're seeing. The regional training, skills and training and trades and innovation center will be in the 2019 budget. And the business plan that was presented here was with the tenant revenues that were anticipated that that would be self-sustaining and that the money would generate enough money that would help support capital funding in the future for that. So that's the assumptions we're using in this budget. The senior, Sienna Senior Living, like I said earlier in my other, the financial update, there were, in the motion here, we're using them as a support services contract right now. We have a proposal with the ministry asking to enter into a management contract with them. Once that's approved by the ministry, then that'll come back and we'll enter into a management contract with them. But so we're assuming, we're assuming that's going to take place. We're using what has been proposed as cost for that. We have been, long-term care staff and our Deputy Treasurer has been working with Sienna on our 2019 budgets. They're looking very favorable right now. We just got some final numbers from them just last week, so we're going over those. But this budget is looking like, based on what they're doing, is that they can achieve not an increase at all, even actually a decrease. And since we're funding the support fee slash management fee, you recall the report and it was that we were to put 25% in from levy in 2019 and the other 75% of the cost was for the first year would be funded from reserves. What I'm doing is then reducing the amount of reserve funding and getting us off that reliance of the reserve funding. And so that when you get to year three of that plan, that we're not still looking at a significant tax increase to fund the management fee or support fee if we cannot find more efficiencies in the long-term care. So that's what's in there. Transportation services, based on our asset management plan, it recommended that, based on the backlog in our capital and to fund the capital based on what we have in assets, that we should be including a 1% corporate tax increase for capital. So we have included that in that 2.23. There is 1% dedicated for capital for roads and bridges. So that's been provided in there. And as well, the Gray County Community Paramedic Program, in the 2018 budget, we only showed funding for first three months of the year because we had no commitment at that time from the province of that pilot continuing. We have, from the lens now, been told we'll have base funding for that program. So we're going to show it in the 2019 budget for a full year. And there's ongoing conversations going on there. Service levels, new initiatives and staffing changes. We've put, your 2019 budget contains funding for resources to support the finance department, resources to set the corporation and land acquisitions and supporting the county's emergency management preparedness. These and any other staffing level changes or service level enhancements have been or will be reported to council as part of the budget review for everyone's consideration. Potential risks, provincial funding increases. We're still unsure of what's going to happen with all of our cost-sharing programs and what those will look like in 2019. So we're using what we've seen in the past and hope that's what we're going to receive. But there will be some risk. And what I mean by that, for example, paramedic services in the past, it's a 50-50 funded program, have given us inflationary increases in the past of, you know, say, 1.5%. So that's what we're putting in the budget. But if those were to be scaled back to 1% or less or something, it would impact the bottom line of what we're raising here for taxes. Long-term care, I spoke about that earlier, about Sienna. You know, they're working diligently on those budgets and trying to find cost savings and reductions. And they're, like I said, are coming in with a budget that's less than we had raised last year. So there's some risks there if those cannot be attained in the 2019 year. Legal costs, we always, HR has contract negotiations with the bargaining units and they maybe need legal assistance. And we never know about the number of arbitrations we end up with on those. So those are difficult to predict, but we have put legal costs in there. And we're looking at all those and we're utilizing our new Director of Legal, trying to reduce those as well. So where he can assist. And utility and fuel costs, those are so difficult to predict. And anyway, we do our research and we put in our presumptions for those. And those, but again, if gas prices, for example, were to increase drastically in 2019, it would have an impact. So then the budget schedule here is I'm bringing this overview and background to council here today just so that the returning members have a feel for where we're at and it will be information for the incoming council they can access and review. We'll have a full, planned full-day budget workshop like we did last year. Comments I got last year, that went well, were well. I know it seemed long, but it was appreciated that each of the directors got up and spoke to their departments and their needs. And if all goes well, then we could bring a budget bylaw back on February 14th. In saying that, if council needs more time, needs more questions, answers or reports back and things like that, staff's willing to do that and we'll keep moving the budget along. So overall, I said, this budget, looking with that estimated of growth, that we'd have a net increase of 2.23%. In saying all that, I did make a comment in the report about the social services upload. 2018 was the final upload by the province. So that benefit in the past number of years, we've had really low tax rate increases. And it's based, you know, I believe last year it was about $400 and some thousand with the upload that the province was taking. So that's no longer in this budget. So that's why this budget is coming back to more of a cost increase of around 2%. So staff is still working on these budgets. If we can find savings or if we notice issues that we have something wrong, they should be adjusted. The other way, we'll do that for that January 31st. But based on where we're at today, this is what this budget's looking at, like, is a 2.23% increase.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. That's well done. Good report. Any comments from our councillors on this report? Any questions? Councillor McKean.
Thank you, Warden, holiday. And thanks for the presentation, Kevin. So the $551,000, that's of new assessment growth, that's the five-year average.
Yes, that's right.
And so, you know, I understand why you would use that. What was our net new assessment growth in 2017? Do you recall offhand? Thank you. So if we were to, just theoretically, if we were to see that kind of new assessment growth again this year for this budget, what would that, take that down to the net levy increase for?
If used at all to reduce the levy, so roughly about $560,000 would be 1%, so it would, you know, it would almost flatline it. It'd be, what, .23%? I'd have to dumb it.
Yeah.
Pretty close, you know.
Well, I guess we'll have to wait for the numbers to come in. But I foresee that likely that growth that we'll see in 2018 or 2018 will pretty well mirror 2017. So this, I understand your reluctance to kind of look at the future, but I think that it'll likely be that we'll have pretty well zero increase. And why I ask that question is, you know, we take this back to our municipalities or lower-tier municipalities. And if the county's already talking about 2.23 with the increases we have to have there, it couldn't get to be a pretty onerous tax increase. But I think that we can take some solace. I think that this could change. Thank you.
No, just, I'll give some rationale of why, you know, I'm using an average. And I think all that growth has costs associated with it go forward. And I think Blue Mountains will know that better than anybody. So we already, according to our asset management plan, we have a backlog of stuff that we need to get done. This, taking an average and using what's above the average and using it for roads and bridges as a means, I think, to help address the backlog. Putting the 1% in is just trying to get us up to a level of funding that we're supposed to be at, but it's not doing anything with that backlog. So when you're having really good years like this with growth, that was, my thought was, here's an opportunity that we could help to address that. So that's just my rationale for it. Okay.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Councillor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Kevin. I'm not going to get into the weeds. Don't have to worry about it. Aside from paying my tax bill.
The comment about long-term care and inflationary, we're not getting inflationary increases from the province?
We don't know yet, like the...
Like, have we, usually?
Well, for example, in paramedic services, last year we did. We got, for example, and then CMI is based on, it's a case mix index. It's based on the level of care that they provide in a window of time, right? So if your patient load, for example, and the level of care differs from what we've budgeted and what that comes out would be a loss of funding to the homes in that example. Same as in my financial report earlier, Lee Mann or CMI, there, when they looked at their CMI, and these are being done across the province. So we don't know what all the other home cares levels are going either. So, you know, we took the year before's CMI and said that's, but theirs went way up and garnered them, you know, about $200,000 more in money. That could be the opposite in 2019. We don't know those numbers until, like, I think it's March, your CMI, March, you get that. Paramedic services, a lot of times we don't get those till August. We don't, of the following year, we'll get notes of them. So this year, it's template to find your numbers and stuff. Maybe I'm reading to it, I don't know, but it's just funny that it's showing that number in a template. And then what I'm referencing, social services, there's a lot of conversation about childcare and what we get. And I'm looking to see what's out of the province, how that changes, you know.
Thank you for that. So if I may, you also run in Budget Impacts, Highlights, and it's the formula uses the average of the following five data sources. So you mentioned a comparator group and you mentioned McDowell and Associates Municipal Survey. McDowell and Associates Municipal Survey, is that something that is published every year? Or is that, because I Googled it up and I know that we had some work done in 2014?
For you, Warden. That's a great question. We use McDowell and Associates, and yes, it is published every year. You might have to pay for it. But the reason we have used McDowell and Associates quite often, maybe three or four years ago, the last time, the reason we chose them as one of the indicators is they go out and pull a bunch of indicators as well. So their number has already been spread out in their, with their indicators. We use that. And so we felt it was a common sense, one of the common sense pieces to use for that piece.
So are you using current or just previous year data?
We use whatever data is there as long as it's all in the same year. So I believe that for 2019, we're using 2018, and we go through that.
And so further to that, the comparator group comprises who?
We tried to reference similar population, rural, urban, and CMSMs were, you know, upper level. Look after what's childcare.
Yeah. So we've got, the comparator group... So we've got, the, the comparator group, you've got about 15 comparators in general, and as Kevin said, it talks a little bit about municipality size, distance from the county of Gray. So you have to meet a certain number of criteria in order to fit that, and number of employees, number of unions, and so on. So our comparator group has remained the same for quite a, quite a bit of time. It's the counties that pick up on some of those things that get included.
That's a, a formula I've been using for years.
It's a formula being used for the comparator group.
Right. Okay. Thanks for that. Thanks for those answers. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, any other questions? Let's see, any other questions? So we'll call the vote and ask whether this motion shall be carried. All in favor? Thank you, Kevin. Well done. So as-